Good evening. Welcome to the March 25th, 8th meeting of the year. Alyssa, can you please read the statement of notice publication?
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 5th, 2024, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Can we stand up for, uh, sorry, roll call, please?
Mayor Gindy?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seula?
Here.
Councilman DeZemian?
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yeah.
Councilman Krenzel?
Here.
Council President Olivera?
Here.
Please stand for the salute.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. You may be seated. We have no proclamations. Uh, we're gonna talk about the agenda session. There is three, uh, for, uh, first reading. Uh, first one is 2020, 2024-14, which, uh, Jason, if you could, uh, brief us on this? Recreation fees?
Oh, sorry. So what we did with the, uh, 2024-14, um, we're just looking ahead to next season for our rec fees. We made some changes with cheerleading and the rec department is taking over Pop Warner Football. So we just wanted to ensure that we encompass the fees in our fee schedule in order to be compliant with, uh, the, uh, the ordinances that we have on file.
All right, thank you. Uh, next one is gonna be a 2024-15, which is on handicap parking, Albert Street. A special, a person with handicap accessible requested it. Uh, so we are, uh, gonna move on it. 2024-16, uh, special events. Andrea, could you, uh, brief on that?
Sure, uh, 2024-16, it's, uh, ordinance to amend your special events permit. Uh, it does two things, the amendment. The first one is it includes an exception to your special events permit for flag raisings. If there's a flag raising, provided that there's no ceremony after, which would need a special events permit, then they are going to be exempt from obtaining the special events permit. The second amendment, uh, it, it actually allows the department heads that are reviewing the permit applications to request a, a meeting with the department head, that, so that, uh, person submitting the permit may have to meet with the department head to discuss the event, so you can work out all the kinks beforehand and it, and it provides some time periods in there.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna move to our second reading, 2024-13. Alyssa?
Ordinance 2024-13, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 350 of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, entitled zoning.
Make a motion away of the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, before you open this up to public comment, um, during the period in which, after first reading, we received a request, a recommendation from code enforcement to amend the ordinance to, and, and I believe council has been provided with, uh, copy of the amendment, but, uh, for everybody to be aware that the copy of the amendment is to prohibit all types of school buses other than the van type. And that came as a recommendation for your code enforcement. If that's, um, if that's an amendment that you guys wanna make, we would need a motion on the amendment and then a vote on it.
Counsel, if you agree, then I would like a motion on the amendment.
I make a motion. Second.
Motion by Councilman DeZemian, seconded by Councilwoman DeSeula.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
All in favor. So we're gonna be moving this to a first reading then.
So, yeah, so that would convert this into first reading, so we would just need, uh, a motion for the first reading.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-13 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April 8th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Uh, motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you, Alyssa. We're gonna continue with the first reading of 2024-14.
Ordinance 2024-14, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 155, entitled fees.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-14 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April 8th, 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street in South River.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Ballas?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-15.
Ordinance 2024-15, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, Chapter 193, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by amending Section 193-31.1, Schedule 2A, Handicap Parking thereof.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-15 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized, uh, to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April 8th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Uh, motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-16.
Ordinance 2024-16, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 288A, entitled Special Events.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-16 on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April 8th at 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
A second.
Uh, motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna go into reports. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The 2023 local aid program and the 2024, we're combining them into one contract, um, working away on them and will be doing our best to get that out to bid for you as soon as possible. The 2023 local transportation projects grant, as well as the 2024 version of that, they've been submitted, but nothing's come out of the state that I have heard yet. Uh, the substation maintenance is, they're continuing working on it. Um, the batteries and switch house three are all very old and in need of replacement, so we'll be doing a change order on that. And no, no new news on the stormwater grant application. They're just, we're working away on that.
All right. Anything for Bruce? Bruce, I had a question about the road program. Could the police department parking lot be included in that?
Yes.
Yes.
It's up to you as the governing body. If you want me to, I'll meet with the chief, Mr. Landenski, whomever you designate. We'll walk it, figure out what you want, and then roll it into it.
Jim, John, opinion?
A good idea?
All right.
It's harmony.
All right, talk to, uh, the chief whenever you got a chance. All right, thank you. Joe?
Just one item. Uh, your bill is, you have an amended resolution. Uh, the invoice for the one cheer and dance finals came in $420 less, uh, because a few participants backed out this weekend, so we wanna approve it with the correct amount. So that's the only change.
Page? Anything for, uh, sorry, anything for, uh, Joe?
Yes. (inaudible) for having our shred event on Saturday, May 11th. (inaudible).
Anything for age? Are we making out the parts, uh, potholes? Thank you. Chief?
Also, we are currently operating approximately 95 hours per year. Uh, I wanna thank Mayor Landenski as well as Mayor Gindy for allowing the department to be a duty apparatus in the high school last evening. Uh, welcome home to robotics team.
Thank you. If, tonight again?
Just a reminder, on, uh, Thursday, April 25th at 6:00 PM, we'll be holding our very first Neighborhood Watch Program meeting. Uh, the flyers for the program are on our social media pages as well as the Borough website, as well as the police website. So if you can, if you're interested in joining and participating in Neighborhood Watch, please go on, uh, go on to those sites and, uh, register for the meeting. Uh, there's no location yet, but we're trying to, you know, figure out how many people are actually interested. So far, we only have 15 people. Uh, that's, like I said, Thursday, April 25th is the day we're gonna have the beginning of 6:00. Uh, another note, uh, we are looking to hire still, uh, crossing guards. So if anybody is interested in, uh, consider full time, but you're only really working for hours. Uh, if you're interested in becoming a school crossing guard, please stop at Borough Hall, pick up an application. And the police department is also hiring for, uh, special law enforcement, class one. Uh, class one officers are the ones that you see, um, of enforcement. Uh, we work on weekends, we do park control, they work up at the schools for those. They don't carry guns, but they do go to training for two. Go ahead, if you know anybody that, uh, is young that is looking for a kid at the Justice or anybody that's older, that's retired, that wants to get bombed, please stop by, uh, Police Department or you can go off policehat.com and, uh, get an application.
Just for you, chief.
Anything for the chief? Andrea?
I have nothing tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
Art?
Just a couple things, Mr. Mayor. Um, the RFP for the water main replacement engineering is out. It is, um, back on the 27th and have a recommendation for the council at the next meeting. Uh, the other issue is, we have two sewer main breaks in town, one on Division 3, one on Olbert Turnpike. We're still working on the logistics of traffic and the type of repairs. So the public should just keep their eyes open for nixels because there's gonna be street closures and it's not gonna be for one day. It's gonna be more than one day. That's all I have.
Anything for Art?
Art, can you just, uh, talk a little bit of how we are reaching out to our representatives about trying to obtain grant money for the water line?
Yes, when the, um, Door McDonald, the Special Assistant for Special Projects, has sent out letters to all our federally elected officials, giving them, um, a overview of the water projects and asking for federal funding.
Thank you, Art.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, started off with, uh, John Krenzel?
Basically, you heard the, uh, reports as to what's been going on as far as the DPW is concerned. The potholes are being worked on. You got the shred event, the two sewer breaks. Uh, that's going to take quite a while to, uh, fix and it is going to be quite costly. So not only is it gonna be inconvenient, but it's gonna hit us in the pocketbook. And we're waiting for more grants, uh, for the roads that we've planned for 2024. We've already received, uh, the grants there. It's over a million dollars. Uh, so when people say we don't go for grants, yes, we do. We go for lots of grants and we get lots of money, but there's lots of roads that still need to be worked on and we are slowly getting to them all. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Kretchinsky?
Thank you, mayor. Um, first off, I'd like to remind everybody, Office on Aging will be closed this Friday in observance of, uh, Good Friday and the Borough offices will also be closed. Um, with that, that's all I really have right now. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
We had the first public budget meeting this past Saturday and a reminder that there's another one coming up on Saturday, April 20th, um, at 8:00 AM in this room. And the Shade Tree Committee is looking for volunteers this Saturday for the rain garden at the high school from 9:00 AM till noon. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Uh, just a couple things from the library. The Friends of the Library will be holding their book and bake sale starting on Monday, April 1st. The hours will be Monday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Tuesday, 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Wednesday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM and Thursday, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. They're also holding an eclipse party on Monday, April 8th at 3:00 PM. You can come and view, uh, the eclipse at the library. They're gonna be having some solar themed crafts and snacks. And if you want, you can pick up glasses for the eclipse if you wanna view it from your own home. So they'll be giving them out then. Uh, the Board of Health, I'd like to thank, um, the members of the Board of Health and Dr. Wuos for their participation in our past rabies clinic. In total, 143 dogs, um, were vaccinated, 103 from South River and 40 from out of town and 28 cats in total, 20 from South River and eight from out of town, so it was very well attended. And that's, and tomorrow I will have my library board meeting and Wednesday, cultural arts. So I'll have a report on them next time.
Thank you. Councilmen Seula?
The only I have is our EDC, um, we couldn't meet last week, so we're gonna be meeting this Wednesday, the 27th, 7:00 PM at the senior building.
Excellent. That's it. Council President?
So Parks and Rec Flag Football Registration is open online through midnight tonight. Um, if you'd like to register after midnight tonight, you can do so up until Wednesday in person. Uh, on Wednesday, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, we will be doing player evaluations with the site to be determined. I'm happy to report that right now, uh, as of this morning at 11, last time I spoke to Terry, we had 86, uh, participants registered for flag football. Uh, softball, we're still looking for a couple of, uh, players. So if you have a daughter that's interested in softball, please let us know. We're more than happy to get them registered. And tumbling and stunting clinics are now open for cheerleading. So again, if you have anyone that's interested in stunting or, uh, tumbling, please, uh, register online or you can stop by 55 Reed Street. Uh, as Councilman DeZemian mentioned, we had our first public forum on Saturday. The weather wasn't so kind to us. It was really bad outside. But again, if you have the opportunity, April 20th, we will be meeting again, uh, at 8:00 AM in the council chambers, just to discuss what's in the budget, uh, why we came to the conclusions we came to. And if anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. I will hold my comments till later. I will be opening it up to the public. You have 10 minutes. State your name and your address.
Hello, Richard Byrne, Levin, Bisset Place. I do, uh, wanna thank the council for the Resolution 144, supportive of Vision Zero. Um, it's just, you know, such incidents are infrequent in this town, but still, you know, zero is the best, uh, option on fatal accidents and such. And I just wanted to add about the eclipse on April 8th. Um, it's a total eclipse from Texas running through Maine, but here in South River, it's gonna be an 82% partial eclipse. And it is unsafe to look directly at the sun during any phase of a partial eclipse. And at the library is, uh, got a supply of safe solar viewer glasses that you can use, that you can safely watch the crescent sun. Um, I, I went to the South Carolina, the one in 2017 and it's a once in a lifetime thing to see the total, but, uh, yeah. Partially, you definitely need, uh, eye protection and giving them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public?
Lisa Byrne, Levin, Bisset Place. I have a question actually for Art. Do we have any updates on the lights on the bridge? Cause they're still out.
County haven't put anything to me, sent me any emails, called me or anything.
Anyone?
Joe, can you, can you put the mic?
Yeah, we'll bring you the mic, Mr. Renato. You got the special microphone.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Gindy, Councilmember, Joe Donato, 30, Daly Street, South River. Uh, but anyway, um, just wanna thank the police for, uh, their response to my little accident. They were really quick. Very compassionate. At my, uh, handicap parking. Thank you, chief, I appreciate that. Um, other than, uh, other than that, I'll let you know, the lights, you're talking about the lights of the approaches. Up to the, uh, up to the silver bridge, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yes.
But they're not county?
No, they're not county.
Our county.
No, they're not.
Whose are they?
JCPN.
Okay. That's who county have the contract with, I believe.
Yeah, I, I think I sent over the information to... I've worked a couple months, so my, my mind is not really that sharp about what I did or didn't do. How does the, uh, the elevator's not working today? It's trying to keep me out. Okay. Um, I wanted to point out something to discuss on any guys who go out and work with all these roads. Now, you realize, of course, that many of the roads that we're doing here are having, uh, have, uh, three lanes, I would say, four and six in four domains, which are supposed to be replaced. I suggest and has been in the past in the domains, if you're gonna be doing the roads, do fund, you don't have, and you can break any other utility. Or the utilities owned by private, uh, concerns, have those taken care of at the same time and road is finished and we never have to worry about doing anything to it for the next 10, 15, 20 years. Otherwise, we, uh, the taxpayers' money (inaudible) so taxpayers' money always might have to be ripped up and rebounded after the water. But the, uh, the water needs probably to be standardized by water mains in South River.
Well, right now, we're putting out a plan, which here we put out the RFPs.
RFPs are out for the engineering part of it. They're due this week. A recommendation for the council for, uh, appointing the engineer for the project at the next meeting.
Is this for the entire town or just for a certain section of town?
About for a thousand feet, not the entire town.
Okay, um, the reason why I ask is, uh, a couple times before meetings, I suggested strongly that we have a public meeting inviting the residents in for one last shot and letting, uh, everyone else to know about where really bad water problems are in the town. Is that what we done?
Well, we have a target area from the complaints that we had and from the hydraulic modeling that was done by Kleinfelder. That's the first section that's gonna be tackled.
Understood.
On Street, Daly Street.
Unfortunately, and not everybody comes to the council and, and files a complaint. They like to go, you know, on Facebook and everyplace else to give their complaints. Um, the reason why I suggest a meeting to give them one last shot because if you don't, you know what's gonna happen. You know. Paying that, not taking care of what the problems are and it's gonna be over and over again because we don't want that. So if we're gonna be doing, uh, the coordinating, it would be a good idea to, uh, follow the public, at least give them one more chance to come forward and help problems before it's, uh, replacing water mains that, that may not have to be replaced.
Well, when we appoint the engineer and he comes up with the first, um, areas to go to the I-Bank for funding, we'll make that public and then come to a public meeting. If they weren't included, they can let us know. A thousand feet doesn't get you a lot of South River. It gets you a pretty good area of the target areas. The problem is, even after you do the thousand feet, there's still other thousands of feet to be replaced that will still give you some discoloration when there's a fire or a hydrant flushing. Uh, we are moving forward. We've awarded the contract for the chemical change. We're gonna be doing a reverse flushing program first. Once we do that, one of the chemicals does coat the pipes to reduce the flaking when there is a situation like a fire or hydrant flushing. We believe that will reduce the amount of brown water. It's not gonna be zero until the whole town is completed and that could be years.
Personally, I won't be here until, I don't know whether you will. Maybe you will.
I might be.
Um, the other, uh, other question is, uh, other question is, uh, last year we had a talk a lot about the water, and now I see the notice that, uh, during, uh, the months last year, it was July and August, or something like that, we had, uh, problems with the, uh, uh, water being, not being in the system, um, and that our, uh, plant was, uh, taken offline, which we need to cut down, and we aren't utilizing that. Where would be getting the water for?
East Brunswick.
Do we have to pay any money for that? Because I think we're supposed to get a certain amount.
We get eight hundred and fifty thousand. Anything over that, we pay extra for.
Well, it would have been good to know about that, because all the time that we spoke about at that council meeting, I was under the impression that our system is still operating. And that was a little.
In July and August, our system was operating. It was later on when we shut down to do repairs, and we were getting from East Brunswick. We didn't want to shut our system down in July and August, when it's the peak system season. People use the most amount of water, so it wasn't shut down at that time. Those adjustments were, I explained at the last meeting, those adjustments to the chemicals were made immediately after we found the testing. A lot of it was due to heat and dissipation of chlorine through the system from East Brunswick and from our own. Um, as you can see, the DEP didn't send us the notice to even notice the public till December, from July and August.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was surprising. I thought they, uh, they expedited, something was wrong, they expedited, and suddenly ran away, but it takes months to find out.
And if you read the notice that was posted, and we'll be going out in the bills for the next billing period, they said, what can you do? Their answer is nothing. It has been corrected, and that's it.
I mean, say, nothing for you to worry about. If people know exactly what the problem is, actually let them decide whether they want to be worried about it or not. Because, uh, they, they, uh, they're, uh, put the problem on.
The summer is the most difficult time to treat the water with the dissipation from the heat with the chlorine. As I said, we try to keep the, we have a new tank, which is half a million gallon tank filled. Recommendation is really to keep it at a half, so there's more space for the heat dissipation. We can't do that. The amount of water that we use from April fifteenth to September fifteenth, sometimes over a million gallons, um, a day.
Notice in the prior, uh, nineteen seventy-eight, uh, report, and drawings that were prepared, it appears with, um, a couple more tanks besides the storage tank we have now, but the place that, uh, that's wasn't there. Glad you guys can take up the first one. Other than that, um, right now, I'm trying to get back to the second thing. Have a, have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Going once?
Julie Mada, one eighty-nine Main Street. Um, a few months ago, I had requested a, um, traffic study for Whitehead Avenue. Did we receive that yet?
Chief?
Back in December, when we, I had heard that it was finished, and I had to reach out to the, um, person in charge of it, I did leave a message, and I didn't get an answer back. Due to the, I assumed that maybe he was away, because it was the end of the year. Um, but with the accident that just happened this weekend on Whitehead Avenue, I think it's very important for us to look at, especially those busy roads where accidents, accidents like that can happen. Um, the Vision Zero that Mr. Byrne spoke about earlier, um, is great. We did do that resolution in two thousand and twenty-two. Is it an annual thing that we do?
We're redoing it because they did not get the funding that they applied for with that resolution.
Okay.
They were applying for new funding, so we gave them a new resolution.
Okay, because we did it in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, but not in twenty twenty-three, so.
They applied to the federal government, and they got denied.
Okay, along with Vision Zero and those grants, they do the Safe Streets for All. I know the county reached out to try to get some funding too for simple things like crosswalks and stop signs and stuff like that, so. If we can, once we send that resolution, maybe try to request to see what simple things that the county or the state can help us with for safe streets. Um, I saw in today's meeting, you have your agenda for your Human Relations Commission. However, you only appointed four people. Do we know what other members will be on the Human Relations Commission?
There was three existing to begin with.
Which ones were existing?
Good question. You want to know by, off the top of your head, Alyssa, would you?
No, I wouldn't.
One was Anita Chata.
Irina?
No, she wasn't even on last year.
Andrew?
Nope, not even.
Last year?
No. I'll tell you right now.
Which council member will be in charge of the Human Relations?
Donna.
Will be having a first meeting this year?
Well, they would have to call it.
Yeah, they're gonna have to call it.
I thought council calls the meetings.
For Human Relations?
For any commission?
No.
No.
Commission sets up the.
Commission sets up the meetings, and they set the, they set the time.
There should be on the resolution, or what sets up what day?
Nope.
At the beginning of the year, I get my list. Water Health sends me one, Cultural Arts sends me one, Home sends me one.
DC sends me two.
And they set it up for the year.
Mrs. Brown is the second one. No, there's three, there's three. Two expired end of this year, the one expires next year. I'll tell you right now.
Okay, I would have thought that at the beginning of the year, each commission has their date that you have to post in the newspaper, right? To know which meetings or when they are, or where they're going to be. I would assume as council liaisons, you would have to know those things or contact the people in charge?
Well, considering I just put the board together again, um, they're gonna get themselves organized, and then we're gonna have a listed.
Glad to hear it, we are in the end of March now.
Well, better than late than ever, right?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else from the, uh, public? Going once, going twice, going thirty times.
Make a motion to close public.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilman Kershinsky.
All in favor?
Uh, Alyssa, can we go into consent resolutions, twenty twenty-four, one thirty-seven to one forty-six?
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-four oh one authorizes the Borough.
Actually, I'm gonna stop you for a second, I'm sorry for this. I wanted to go into amaryllian appointments. Although this is my amaryllian appointments, we're doing Human Relations, which we're, uh, jumping to. We have four new members for Human Relations, and I have one for Advisory Committee on Persons and Disability. At the last council meeting for Human Relations, we wanted an understanding of what basically it was about. Although I gave you a summary on what it is, I decided to invite the chairman of the Human Relations, Anita Chata, if you don't mind coming up here and give us more of a briefing on what Human Relations is all about. And thank you for bringing some of the new members.
Thanks, Mayor, um, Gundy, and thank you, past Mayor Krenzel, who started the Human Relation Commission with me, gave me the opportunity to put the commission, uh, in place. And, uh, thank you, thank you, and good evening, everyone present here. What is the purpose of Human Relation Commission? Um, frequently people ask, so the name itself is self-explanatory, human relation. So, when I moved in South River ten years ago, you know, I said, you know, we need to bring people together. Even though we do have Art and Heritage Commission in place from years. So, um, this is the commission that every county, every city, every borough has, and Mayor Krenzel requested me to start it, and good to see you here. Um, so, uh, just, uh, giving you a little definition here, and then I will talk about, you know, what is our goal in South River? What are we looking for? Uh, so, um, promoting equality and diversity, ensuring that, uh, all individuals have equal, uh, equal access to opportunities and services regardless of their race, ethnicity, religion, gender, or other characteristics. So, to do that, um, when I moved here, um, I was told that there aren't too many Indians here. So, there are communities who are in majority in South River, and there are communities in South River, those are in minority. And, um, uh, a lot of people in South River do not know. I'm glad that, uh, Mr. Pashad and his wife is able to come today, and, uh, we have Wyson, uh, who's from Chinese community, and there are few other people, I believe Shanada couldn't make, who is from African-American community, and myself is from Indian community. So, our goal is to, all of us get together, make it a diverse community of South River, and celebrate our culture's heritage with, um, Ha- Art and Heritage Commission. To begin with, when I started the flag raising just for my country, I said, you know, when, uh, Mayor Krenzel appointed me, we started application process. So, people got opportunity to raise their flags, and I'm sure all of you are aware of that, you know? And it was, uh, very humbling experience to see. A lot of people came up to me and said that this is the first time ever in South River, we were able to do this. There were some questions and answers, why do we have to do the application? I, when I walked in here, uh, you guys were talking about the flag raising. I missed, uh, some of them, uh, I don't know if there is amendment in that or not, the.
There, there is in the Special Events Ordinance, we are making an amendment that if you're just simply doing a flag raising, you don't need to do a special events permit. You should still fill out the application, but you don't actually need to do the special events permit.
Right, so when we started, we were not asking for the permit. The purpose of, uh, application was simply so we can assist them. So, we know when it is, if they need the microphone, if they need the tables, if they need anything. I used to bring it from my home, uh, you know, to help, uh, everybody, uh, to do their flag raising, um, with the best of our ability. So, going forward, that was just the beginning, flag raising, that's not the goal. The goal is that all of us come together and be proud of being, uh, part of South River, right? And, uh, celebrate. And if there is anybody, and one of the other goal of Human Relation Commission is, is on the definition. If anyone feel that there is a discrimination going on as, uh, um, on the basis of race or color or whatever, they can come to the Human Relation Commission, uh, where Human Relation Commission will bring it to the attention of the mayor and the council and all the policymakers. That is another, uh, goal of a Human Relation Commission, um, in short. If I'm missing anything, you can tell me. Uh, we welcome every community to contribute, you know, and, uh, share their feelings, how they want to make South River a diverse community. I know that it is, you know, but when, uh, I came here, there is a majority Portuguese here. I have, we have a lot of Spanish, but we have some other, all the Filipinos are here also. I was actually requesting one Filipino, uh, resident here, you know, to join, uh, the commission also. So, we'll see, hoping that other communities will also, uh, you know, uh, join. And, uh, looking around here also, I, I would love to see multicultural community also, uh, attending the council meetings here, you know? And, any question? I, I know that a majority of you know me.
Yep.
And I'm thankful.
Just so you're aware, your council lia- uh, council liaison is the same, Donna, is also the same person for Cultural Arts.
Okay.
So, I already spoke to the Cultural Arts in regards of the flag raising, so, uh, this week, we have the meeting, so you'll be, uh, visiting them and talking some more about.
And Cult, uh, Culture Art Heritage, uh, Commission know that it is my bucket list to make a multicultural day on a very big level, so we will be working together on that.
Talk over there.
And, uh, look forward.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yes. That's about the Human Relation Commission. I just, uh, out of this, yeah, I am the president of the Homeowner Association of Heritage Landing. Um, sorry to bring it up, but I was sitting over there, I said, when I go there, I'll mention it. Um, four, five years ago, you know, it's, uh, I believe related to, uh, you know, um, they requested the, uh, road repair. There are a lot of potholes on the street of Heritage Landing, and, uh, I think I spoke to that time, uh, Mayor Krenzel also, and they were, we were told that there are other places, those are worse than Heritage Landing. But please pay attention, because people are complaining.
We will, we'll take care of it.
And they come to me to complain, and I tell them, go to the council.
We'll take care of that. Uh, Age, if you don't mind, drive up there tomorrow and take a ride. Take a look at it.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you, pleasure.
Thank you.
Today is a, a very, um, uh, big festival of India. Uh, festival of colors.
Of colors.
Anybody knows here?
I knew that.
Only.
Yeah, I knew that.
Mayor Krenzel attended it when I organized it in Grakowski Park. You, you were there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have someone who will talk about it?
We'll do it, we'll talk. Thank you, Anita.
And, uh, what we do on the Festival of Colors, do you remember what we do?
I, I don't.
Mayor Krenzel?
Well, you have the colors, you throw them up in the air and all that.
And what we did to you.
But you also celebrate with the, uh, there's music in festivals, it's a celebration of spring.
Yes, yes, so, you know, we brought it actually. If you don't mind, he'll share it with you, right? Shanta?
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alyssa, consent resolutions.
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-four oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it is hereby resolved, the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty twenty-four one thirty-seven to twenty twenty-four one forty-six. One thirty-seven, appoint Board of Health member. One thirty-eight, authorizing of tax sale assignment. One thirty-nine, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of the school monies. One forty, authorizing the installation services for E nine one-one solution from wireless communications and electronics. One forty-one, authorizing the submission for the Middlesex County Enhanced Recycling Grant. One forty-two, authorize certain utility refunds. One forty-three, authorizing the appointment of Hector Garcia as water sewer laborer. One forty-four, resolution in support of Vision Zero. One forty-five, accept March eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular and executive session minutes. One forty-six, authorize the bills and claims list.
What is your pleasure, council?
Move the resolution second.
Motion by Councilman Krenzel, seconded by Councilman Seola.
Councilman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kershinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you, we have nothing else for new business. We're gonna go into governing body, uh, Councilman Seola?
Uh, yeah, just want to again thank, um, our police, fire, our DPW, and our electric utility, uh, for a great job that they do every day, keeping the South River safe and, uh, keeping South River clean and power on. So, again, gentlemen, thank you very much. Please, uh, Age, if you can, pass it on to the guys. Mark, same. Chief? Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Donna, uh, Donna. I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you were done yet.
Also, I was gonna say the same as Councilman Seola did, I, there was many, uh, uh, great compliments. On Facebook, sometimes it does have nice things on it, um, about, uh, about the water and the flooding this past week, and you all did a tremendous job. I would like to congratulate the Rambotics team. I didn't know what was going on the other night by my house, one of the fire trucks and everything, but to welcome that team home, yeah, I know they were very appreciative, and I, um, congratulate Eric Gartner and all the teachers and the advisors that have, uh, to do with that. And other than that, happy Easter.
Thank you, Councilman DeZemian.
Um, I had the honor of attending an interfaith community dinner with the mayor and our chief of police at the Islamic Center on Thomas Street, met wonderful people there, and thanked them for hot, their hospitality. It was a wonderful time.
Thank you. Councilman Kershinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to also thank all of our borough workers, our police, fire, DPW, and Robert Wood for, uh, taking care of us. Um, just to let you know that all the borough offices will be closed this Friday, and observe it's a good Friday. Uh, that includes, uh, the Borough Yard on Saturday. Um, congratulations to the Robotics team, and there's no bulk pickup this Friday. Uh, with that, I wish everyone a very happy Easter.
Thank you, Councilman Krenzel.
Yes, in no particular order. Uh, first, that's a good thing that you went to the dinner there, uh, invited, I could not attend, but, uh, it's a good thing to reach out to the Muslim community, their Ramadan, uh, their blessed, uh, month is coming to an end on April the eighth. So, we wished them a blessed, uh, few weeks that remains in that. Uh, speaking of April eighth, thank you, Richard Byrne, for reminding us of something that is very, very important, the April eighth eclipse, please get eye protection, uh, looking at ten percent of the sun will blind you, and this is gonna be more than that, about eighteen percent, and you will go blind, period, no ifs, ands, or buts, you know? It's just something that, it will happen. You stare at the sun, you go blind, and it does not come back, so don't be stupid. Uh, congratulations to the Rambotics team, please friend and follow them on Facebook. You'll also find out when they do their fundraisers, I was able to attend the one in Applebee's. Um, great time, uh, lots of the kids are around there, uh, families, friends, people from South River. Uh, it's, uh, an oddball thing to have, but it's a great thing to have. Uh, there are kids that are interested in it, and it's something that the town can get, uh, behind and support them. So, uh, congratulations to them, and please come out and support them. Uh, again, Happy Holy, the Asian Indian Celebration of, uh, Spring. And, uh, March thirty-first is, uh, Easter in our Western churches, so happy Easter to all. And of course, coming up at our next meeting on April, uh, April fifteenth, uh, don't forget to pay your, uh, income taxes. So, actually, that's not our meeting, it's April fifteenth, it's gonna be after that, so, well, consider it an early warning, uh, because the state and federal government gets very fussy if you don't pay, so April fifteenth. And good for you, good for you, we'll see you all on April the eighth, that's all I have.
Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, once again, just want to congratulate the Rambotics team on a, uh, championship win and bringing that home. Uh, Age, thank you again to the DPW guys for doing everything. Uh, one thing I did want to bring up are, uh, please send Dawn a huge thank you for everything she's doing. Um, it's very important for us to continue to try to get grants, and speaking to Joe and Art, you know, reaching out to our representatives, it's a start. I'm a firm believer that you don't get a grant, you don't apply for, um, and I think it's important now that we do have something in the system where we've reached out to them, it's important that we continue to follow up and make sure that we, uh, how do I say this, strategically bother them to, to make sure they know what we're asking for and how we get it. Uh, the water problem is a problem, it's not gonna be solved with hundreds of dollars, it's gonna be solved with millions of dollars. And it's our job as the, uh, council, uh, representatives to make sure that we can mitigate as much as possible for our borough residents. So, once again, thank you to Art and Joe for everything you guys have done, please pass that along to Art, uh, Dawn, um, because hopefully we can get something, and whether it's a little or a lot, um, we'll be extremely grateful, that's for sure. Um, and then just the I-Bank, um, at the next meeting, Art, if you can just explain a little bit more about what the I-Bank is, what it entails, um, because the I-Bank is a great resource, we have a great team, um, that is helping us through that process as well. Joe and Art have been meeting with them. Joe and Art have been meeting with them. So I think it's important that we highlight all the work that's been going on behind the scenes that you guys have been working on to try to solve this issue. And again, it's not, it's not a year fix, guys. It's, it's gonna be a time. And even when you start replacing pipes, they're still gonna be old pipes and it's gonna transfer. So as Art mentioned, you're gonna see a, a complete fix once the system is, uh, completely updated. But again, at the end of the day, I feel confident in this council and making sure that we can accomplish that. It's just a matter of getting it done, getting a plan in place and following through that plan for years to come. We can't take twenty years off, thirty years off, forty years off, cause then that's how we end up in the situation that we're in. So thank you to you guys for doing everything you guys are doing behind the scenes. That's all I have there.
Thank you. Well, we had our first public budget meeting this last Saturday. Sadly, no one showed up. April twentieth is gonna be your next budget hearing, our budget meeting. This is open to the public. This is for you. You get to see what the budget is all about when it comes down to your town. Please come out, voice your opinion, see what the budget's about. It's easier for you to look at it than for you to hear about it on a council. So please, at the last council meeting, I spoke about a possibility of another film coming to our town. They are still working about, working on possibility to bring it, but, but I heard rumor that everybody's running scared that if this does come, that your internet, internet is gonna go back down. Just so you're aware, the last film that came here had nothing to do with your internet going down, period. You're hearing this coming right from me. It was not involved. So I'm telling you that now. Over the weekend, I had, uh, two different types of cultures. I, uh, had the opportunity to have dinner at. One was the Ramadan and the other one was the Portuguese Club fifty-first, uh, landmark, I should say, when they were founded, founded. Uh, I wanna thank the Portuguese Club, uh, Pedro, uh, Lourdes for inviting me Ramadan, Ramadan, uh, Ramadan, Mohammed for, uh, having us. It was such a great time to see the different cultures and how they come together in your own town. And it's everywhere. You just don't realize it's here. This town may be a, it's a small town, but we are filled with so many cultures. Please explore. It's out there. The Department of Public Works, I can't thank you enough. Uh, I know Saturday was a complete utter mess. I was out there with you guys, uh, seeing manholes popping out of the water, uh, out of the ground. The police department did a remarkable job with, uh, road closure. Uh, Mike, uh, Simon thanked them for me. Uh, they, they were out of control over the weekend. Did a great job. Uh, Robotics, um, this is South River. They, they did something that was remarkable. Now they're going over spring break to Le- uh, Lehigh University to compete again. If they win, they go to the Worlds. So wish them the best. This is your town. Easter egg hunt is this Saturday at Grakowski Park. I believe it starts at eight o'clock. Uh, please come out, bring your kids. This is for you. What time is it at? Two o'clock. I'm sorry, two o'clock. And last and final, happy Easter and enjoy the weekend. Thank you. Do I have a motion to close?
I make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion by DeZemian, uh, Councilman, uh, seconded by Councilman Seola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yo, you messed me up.